Currently indisposed.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're ready to begin this planning commission workshop meeting. This is called Supporter. Would you please call the help?
Chair Lee.
Here.
Vice Chair Swatman.
Present.
Mr. Trenn, Mr. Plannin, Mr. Corbres.
Here.
Mr. Carey.
Here.
And Mr. Frutter is...
On his way.
On his way. Thank you.
All right, this meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. Under item four, all comments may under decide for specific action items you can cross-reference to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under the public comment portion of the agenda this afternoon? Thank you. And we'll move on to the item five. This includes presentations highlighting the following topics. Code of Ethical Conduct, Conflicts of Interest, Abstentions, Applications and Findings, Conditions, and Applicant Meeting Site Visits, as they pretend members of the committee.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Brian Scott, Assistant City Attorney, the City of Las Vegas. I've included in your packet a memo from me to you with regard to those issues that you just read off for the record regarding codes of ethical conduct, conflicts of interest, abstention from voting, applications and findings, and conditions, and then meeting with applicants. You all do a really good job for the years that you've been on the commission to kind of adhere to all of the rules of conduct and the ethical standards that you're required to do. Two eighty-one A of the Nevada by statutes kind of lays out exactly what your responsibilities are as they relate to the ethics code that the state has established. As you can see, if you have a conflict of interest, there's a requirement that you abstain from voting. A lot of times you'll ask if I have to leave, if you have to leave the room. You don't, it's not necessary to leave the room, but you can't actually participate in the conversation if in fact you believe you have a conflict of interest. Prior to you not voting on that particular item, you have to at least let the public know exactly what the nature is of your conflict and then indicate that you will not be voting on that particular item. When it comes to items when they're being obeyed or stricken from the record, since those are not issues that would involve any kind of action, either voting for or against the item, you are able to vote on an abstention even if you have a conflict because that's not an action item. It's not something that's...
Mean unobeyance, sorry.
Unobeyance or an abstention, sorry, unobeyance or a striking action because it's not a positive or negative. It's just a holding of the item and number. I'm not going to go through the entire memo word by word. You're all able to kind of to read that. It kind of goes through exactly what type of conflicts of interest you may have, whether you've accepted a gift or a loan from someone who's gone before you. That would require that you not vote on that particular item. If you have a particular interest in a particular project that's occurring, be it you have a contract with a person that's before you, or you may have some monetary gain that's established from you voting yes on that particular item you're to abstain, or if you have a commitment in a private capacity to the interests of others. That means if you're on the board, certain, for example, you go on the Board of Catholic Charities, and Catholic Charities comes before you. You have a fiduciary duty to Catholic Charities as a board member, but you also have a fiduciary duty to the city as a planning commissioner. You could not vote on that particular item because those would be a conflict. Because if you voted no, you're kind of breaching your fiduciary duty to them. If you're voting yes, you could potentially breach your fiduciary duty to us.
And when you say come before us, do you mean them being the applicant?
Them being the applicant. No, them being the applicant. It's really up to you if you make a determination, if the person who's speaking on behalf of an applicant that you don't have any connection with has some connection to you, you'll need to make that determination whether or not that particular relationship puts you within that realm of uncomfortable and that you would not or could not say yes or no to that person. So if your mother was representing, you know, the item, even though you may not have an interest with that particular person she's representing, could you say yes or no to your mother and still feel comfortable about it?
Well, you raised Catholic Charities. I'm not a board member of Catholic Charities, but I represent Catholic Charities, and from time to time, I think in time, those who are successful, it's just about verification.
So you would need to make a determination whether your relationship with him is such that you couldn't, that your independence of judgment is compromised in that situation? And that's something you and I could talk about either offline or online or during the meeting to discuss whether you believe you have a conflict of interest in that case. Again, it goes through just the list of what would be considered to be items that you would find a conflict with and which you'd have to abstain on. Applications and findings, which is on page three, we kind of go through that. There are several types of zoning requests that planning commissioners make recommendations to the city council on. I kind of list them here, general plan amendments, tentative map locations, rezonings, site done plan reviews, special use permits, waivers, and variances. A lot of times you will, when you get a general plan amendment, as you know, that requires a supermajority, meaning that five of the seven have to say yes in order for a general plan amendment to be passed. In the city council, it's different. It's only a simple majority, but for you, because you're recommending by, it requires a supermajority. On the other items, those just require a simple majority. And then on special use permits, I kind of call that one out a little differently because on special use permits, it's always important when the applicant comes up and there's certain conditions that the applicant's agreeing to, that you get him or him or her to agree to those orally on the record. Our code requires, once you do that, they can't sue us on those requirements, on those conditions. So it's always important, you'll always hear me chime in, sit and say, does the applicant agree to those conditions on the record? And they'll say yes. And you need an oral yes from them, or even a head shake and the chairman acknowledging that they're saying yes, that they agree with those conditions. And at that point, they waive their ability to sue later on if they don't like those conditions. And feel free to ask me any questions during the presentation as well. Regardless of the type of application that's being reviewed, please remember that the applicant always has the burden of proof. It's not staff's burden, but it's always the applicant's burden to show that the request is warranted and appropriate for the area and for the subject property. And then when you're making, when you're the planning commissioner, making the motions to approve or deny the application, you have to make appropriate findings. You can't say, I don't like the project denied, or I like the project approved. And that won't withstand a judicial challenge, so you'll, because it'd be considered arbitrary capricious. So you'll need to make certain findings, a fact of why you believe the project is harmonious and compatible with the area, why it's compatible with the surrounding development. And you can do that in several ways. You can do it by just agreeing with what the staff report says. If the staff report is indicating that it's not harmonious and compatible, you can simply say, I agree with the staff report. It's not harmonious compatible with the surrounding development. If you're denying something, you can agree with the neighbors by saying, you know, I agree with what the neighbor said. They indicated that the project isn't harmonious compatible, it's too tall, too large, too whatever, there's too many variances associated with it. But you have to find some, have to have some findings to make a determination that you're going to recommend approval or denial. Like I said, saying I don't like it or I like it isn't sufficient to meet a judicial challenge if you want to...
Mr. Chairman, there are any questions for Brian Scott, Vice Chair Swatman? And just to, you know, go a little bit further on that topic. Once we make our motion, we should then put our findings on the back, on the record, and not, even if we had the findings throughout, you know, our discussion, we should recap them or say, based on the testimony today, I move to approve or move to deny discretion.
Correct. If we're ever challenged judicially for something like this, what happens is the court only looks at the record. They won't look at anything else. There's no depositions and there are auditors. They're simply looking at the record that was established at the time of the public meeting. So normally you'll say, you know, I agree that it's not harmonious and compatible, it's not, it's too tall for this area, it's too dense for this area, therefore I recommend deny. So you would kind of put your findings at back, your findings first, and then you'd have your recommendation. And that way, a court, if ever looking at it, would make a determination and know exactly why you like the project or didn't like the project. And it would more than likely pass that judicial standard of arbitrary capriciousness because you laid out those reasonable issues and findings that you had with the project. And then just going on, again, just going on to page four, which is the last page, conditions. The staff reports always, city staff does a really good job of putting on exactly what amount of conditions can make a particular project palatable to the neighbors, or something that fits into the neighborhood, or one that would keep it in compliance with what the surrounding development looks like. So they always have a list of conditions. And at any time, you're able to add to those conditions or strike conditions if you believe aren't warranted. If you believe a condition is warranted, I know a lot of times you'll put on a condition requiring a six-month review or a one-year review if it's on a tavern or on an HCP for liquor sales or something like that, just so you can see how the business is operating and whether or not it's having a negative secondary effect on the neighborhood. So you're able to do that at your leisure, but you must make sure that whatever condition you put on has a reasonable nexus to whatever the application is that you're considering. So you don't generally put conditions on general plan amendments. You don't generally put conditions on rezonings, but you may put them on, like for a liquor establishment, you may put hours of operation. You may not, but you can't put what type of liquor they can sell. Well, I'm sorry, you can't put the liquor you can sell, but in terms of like the single cans or things like that, but it's got to be something reasonable based upon what application thing they're asking for you to do. When I first started, there was an application where, for Costco, the one in Summer, and we were asked a question whether we could compel them to keep the one on Martin's King open if in fact we allowed the one on Summer to, where we had to keep Martin's King open if we opened the one in Summer. And the answer was no, you can't compel someone to do something that's against their business interest in that sense, in terms of having them open a non-profitable business just to open up or profitable. So just make sure that the conditions have some rational nexus. Our staff is always good about talking to you as to whether or not those conditions are workable or enforceable, and we talked about that also. If a condition's not enforceable, it's almost useless, so you really kind of need conditions that would be enforceable by Vicki's group for code enforcement and the city to actually be able to figure out exactly what they're going to comply with.
And Mr. Scott, just real quick, Mr. Chairman, if I might. It is very helpful, also, if you have a complex case and you're thinking about some conditions that might make that more acceptable to you, if there's any way that you can let us know in advance, because it'd be very challenging to craft some of those conditions like on the fly. But if you give us some time in advance, we can put together some alternatives and then present them to you before the meeting so that you can think about how you want to present that in number, you're much better positioned to make those changes on the fly that way.
And a lot of times applicants will come, well, not a lot of times, sometimes applicants will come with conditions that they've worked out with the neighbors. And again, some of those are enforceable, others are not. Some of them are just kind of an agreement between those two private parties, and they'll have to make sure that they comply with that. But there's some conditions that you simply can't place on a particular item, and those, you have to work on a case-by-case basis to determine exactly which ones those are. So, and again, the ones that come up before you, the plot, spur of the moment, it may be necessary to trail an item just to have staff and the applicant kind of work out the wording, but it's always nice to get those in advance so staff can get a look at. The last thing I had on my memo was meetings with applicants and visiting the subject property. I know that there have been certain workshops that you've probably attended where some of the applicants say that they, some of the attendees say that they don't go to the sites and they don't talk to the applicant prior to the time of the meeting. There is no prohibition in our code or the state law that says you can't visit an applicant and talk about their project. There's no saying you can't go and visit the site. It may actually be worth it while to go visit the site to make sure you kind of know what the layout of the land is. So you are fully within your rights to go visit a site, talk to an applicant if you'd like to, but make sure that when you're making your decision during the public meeting, that any piece of evidence that you use to come up with that final determination or final recommendation is something that's been placed on the record. So you can't have a meeting with the applicant and the applicant says, well, don't tell, I'm not going to say this during the public meeting, but say, I'm going to do this, this, and this, and then you make your determination based on that. Anything you make your determination on has to be something that's in the public record, be it something they've written to you and placed in the public record and given to the clerk, be it something that's testified in the public record, but everything that you use to formulate your determination or your decision has to be things that are in the public record.
Just a question, Mr. Scott.
Sure.
What would be a reasoning, you mentioned at the start of your, about the applicants, that there are some boards that might discourage you from doing that?
Well, I know...
What would be a reasoning not to?
I guess, I don't want to say one, maybe they think that there would be some kind of information that you're relying on that's not placed in the public record, so they want everything out in the open and up front. But you guys are really, you guys have been really good about saying when you've met with applicants and what was said and what was done, and doesn't seem to be any difference between what they told you during the private meeting you had than the public meeting that you're now going through and talking about, so...
Kind of, to kind of make sure you know, do this, do that.
Right, right. So just make sure that everything's crystal clear, everyone's, everything's transparent, that everyone knows exactly what things you're using to make your determinations. So, but like I said, it's always important, I think, for you, it's sometimes hard to look at the plot plans and things like that and get a real good idea of what the project looks like without you going out there and looking at it. Just like I know for certain variances for carports and porticoes or things like that, you may need to go out there and take a look at the project just to kind of get a feel for what the neighborhood looks like, your views like. So you're not prohibited from that, feel free to do that, but again, anything you make your determination on has to be something in the public record, so. But if there's any, anytime you have any questions about conflicts of interest or ethics issues or zoning stuff that planning can't, planning will answer most of the zoning questions for you, but if you have anything regarding any of the ethical issues or things you can and can't do, or can't play, or can't do, you know, just let us know or let me know, and we're always willing to help you, either me or Jim Lewis in my office. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Yes, you're totally comfortable with that, actually, correction, I think.
Okay.
In Nevada, we have a prohibition, which is that it's supposed to be...
Correct.
Some states do.
Yes.
And a lot of new people come into Nevada, they're operating, now it goes back home. So if you're going to use one, yes, back home, just...
Yeah, like I said, as long as you use anything that was revealed to you in private has to be revealed to you in public, and that's the only information you can rely on in making your final determination of approval. That's interesting. You have any questions?
I just, I have a suggestion. Item five, I think, is helpful in building that for especially for new planning commissioners. I'd like to see this given to someone as the...
And we can do that. This is actually, comes from a memo we get to new council members. So during, when you have new council members, the city attorney's office has a book that we create with our different teams, and this is kind of, this is the same thing I use for city council members, so, or new council members. So I, and I will make sure that planning has a copy of this, so new future council members or planning commission members, when they come on and during their training, initial training, will get this as well, and we'll refer to it, or refer to your members on these as...
Mr. Chairman, we also have an ongoing packet of information from planning commissioners that they can add to the ethics. Later on, we could probably do order...
Yeah.
Some final meeting.
In a book.
Yeah. Yeah, even though you don't really follow Robert Somfield's order to any great degree, the city council does it either, you know, there is always a standard protocol. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We're moving on to item six, regarding the planning commission's process.
Mr. Chairman, there have been a lot of abeyances recently, it seems like more than usual, and there's a number of reasons for that. While I haven't dug into the numbers to fully understand why, as a fact, there's, you know, some of these are applicant requested, some of these are requested by a planning commissioner, some of these are requested by staff, but I think overall, projects are starting to be a little more complicated, there's more residents involved and those sorts of things. But it has a major impact on our operations, and since the recession, staff has, it's sort of on a shoestring. And so we thought it might be helpful, just as background, to kind of understand in a little more detail how we process applications and how we work with the applicants and kind of what we go through, that background information for you. Not that I expect necessarily that we'll change anything out of this, but we just thought it'd be helpful information to have, so Mr. Somfield's going to make a brief presentation.
Okay. Good afternoon. For the record, Robert Somfield, Planning Department. Just really quickly, and unfortunately, these are very dense graphs, so they don't come across as well on the PowerPoint, which is why, thank you Nora, has just passed these out. This first one just kind of gives you a breakdown of how the entitlement timeline works. The schedule that's used here is from 2014. It was the last time we significantly made a change to our code or process that resulted in a reduction in our time. That's when we eliminated the pre-application deadline, so that now you can have a pre-app. Technically, the day of submittal, if you can possibly actually get the pre-app appointment, everything is in order and the planner is willing to sign off on it, and then you submit the day the application closing occurs. So this just kind of gives you a very high-level overview, both from... I'm sorry, yes.
Question. Good, Chair, this question, or Vice Chair Swatman, or Mr. Somfield. How does that applicant actually request a pre-application conference? Because I heard they had to log into your portal to set up a pre-application conference, but have they never done it before? How do they know how to build up through that process?
I'm going to defer that question to Mr. Lowenstein, who is the expert on that.
So the first contact would be through our COPA's website, which includes a link to a C O B E planning system. An applicant would select a link to that, which would pop up a field that they could put their preliminary information into, which then after they complete, it sends it to the system, if you were. And if this is their first time, it will send them back a temporary password and invitation to the system. They would then log in and change their password immediately, and then they would have the task of uploading the required documents into their requested pre-application. Through the creation of that data field and the inputting of that field, it would then automatically generate a pre-application conference request in the system, which would then be pushed to the city of Las Vegas employees to review once they've completed their task in the system by uploading their materials and basically signing a bucket. After which, it would be reviewed by the planning supervisor and assigned out to a case planner to be scheduled for a meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, one more question, Mr. Lowenstein. Did you upload the file naming standards to your website or to that portal or...
Yes, on that webpage, it includes links to YouTube videos on how to upload your pre-application request, in addition to a user manual, which includes the naming convention guidelines in it.
That's all on the website, once you log in?
It is, actually, there is a link inside the C O B E plan as well as on the city's website before you select the link to request a pre-application. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so again, Robert Somfield. So this just gives you, this just gives you a very high-level kind of overview of how this process works. Essentially, and it depends on which cycle we're in, it's about, at this stage, it was about an eighty-five day kind of cycle. So the next slide kind of gives you a little more detail in terms of all of the various steps that the plan goes through in order to get through, get through the process. Now, actually, as of the current schedule, we've gotten the timeframe down from application closing date to planning commission. Now, the previous slide went through city council, this is through planning commission only, is just about, just under fifty days. One of the key things, though, to notice here is because of the city's work schedule, there's a number of days in these steps where city staff is actually not here to act on some of these things. And this becomes more important, and unfortunately, this one I could not get on a slide, it's just too involved. This becomes more important as we begin to think about this schedule in a, in the way it actually ends up working out. You guys should have a hard copy there that is available to you. This schedule actually works in three levels, so at any given time, our planning commission support staff... Sorry. Our planning commission support staff is actually working on three cycles. You guys should all have this big one in a eight and a half or eleven by seventeen. And so one of the impacts of when we obey item, I'm sorry.
I don't think we did that.
We don't.
Let's move it.
Okay.
Don't walk in.
Okay, so hopefully you guys can see that. So the point here is from, from one meeting cycle, you can see we've got all of these different levels of activity that are occurring. You have only a limited number of days in which to hit the various milestones, of which there's a good portion of those days. So for staff report preparation, it's got eighteen calendar days, but the reality is that that only has nine actual working days. But that nine working days is not just working on that cycle's staff report preparation, there's two other cycles that are going on, either the conclusion of one or the beginning of the next, that are also occurring at the same time. And so one of the important things that we wanted to just draw out in here is when we have a lot of abeyances, a lot of holds, that just further increases the number of planning commission cycles essentially that staff is working on those reports. So they have reports for a cycle that's completing, reports for the current planning commission cycle, preparation for the next planning commission cycle, and then whatever staff reports may need to be updated for, for abeyance items. Oftentimes, you hold things in abeyance or people request abeyance because the application isn't ready, and so that means there's updated plans, so staff reports have to be revisited and all of those kinds of things. So as we're looking at our efficiency and our productivity, one of the things we just want to be mindful of, both at the staff level but also at the planning commission level, is just the number of items that are being held in abeyance and the impact that has on our ability to process item four, other applications.
I have a question for you, Mr. Chairman. So are you, as someone in essence, saying we should be more, I mean, if there's something that needs to be abated, I think we're going to abate it, but I think we should maybe have a little more diligence? You're saying that if something, if we do ask for something to be abated?
I'm not saying that, dude.
Yeah.
Around that thought?
Yeah, I was just saying.
I think why the workshop is perfect.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I am happy to say that because not only on staff's side, really working with the applicants to make sure they have a complete application and they're ready to go, but also that all of us are very careful when we make an abeyance, that it's for a good reason. And we're not at all suggesting that...
Right.
Look, if there's a problem and you're concerned with the neighbors and you need more time and more work, that's fine, but also, some of these cases go forward to city council, it can be worked out between planning commission and city council as well. Some of your direction can be given, that these things happen before city council, we'll track that, we'll report that to city council. So, yes, in a way, what we're asking is that all of us be a little more diligent and understand the kind of impacts, not to be admit, what, forty-six or forty-eight of the items on the agenda were abeyance items? And so now, the staff's tracking a lot of stuff.
Second of all.
And these timelines, too, I might add, it's sometimes it seemed like a little bit of a long time, especially for some of the folks in the development industry, but these are really, really competitive. There, I don't know that there are any cities of our size, I would argue in the country, that can hit this kind of a timeframe with their application process. At the National APA Conference back in April, I met with a number of planning directors from the West and the Southwest, and they were shocked. They're talking about projects taking a year or more to get through the process, and so they were shocked at how quickly, I was embarrassed to say how quickly we can move things through. But we do it with a lot of attention to detail, and I think we deliver a high-quality product for your consideration, city council consideration. But we just thought it was worth having this conversation about, about the impact of abeyances, not only on staff but on you, because these all come to roots at one time. We could be there till three in the morning when these are pinned, so. Anyway, just something to think about and if there's any questions or thoughts you might have, or direction you want to read to us.
Mr. Chair, through the chair? Yeah, I, to Director Perrigo, he's absolutely right that we have some of the fastest times for development processing that I've ever seen anywhere else. I mean, you go to other states, it could be two years, maybe a year and a half, and you know, I tout that to my friends coming to Las Vegas, you can really get a project up and going fairly quickly through the process if you add your ducks around. The question I have, though, is, you know, we're starting to see those complicated projects that you see on our agendas... that you've seen on our agendas. Should the threshold be changed for projects that, whether through large employment or a large amount of residential, should they even be allowed to come on the agenda until they have their, in some type of better understanding, their development agreement sorted out, the drainage studies sorted out, all the things that take six months or, you know, sometimes up to a year to get through? That way, we're not just kind of sitting through and kind of, you know, meeting after meeting, application after, with the big ones, you know? And I think that this is kind of a new thing that's, that I've seen on there, and I think there's going to be more of them down the road, once one of them picks off. Is that a possibility, that threshold be changed?
Mr. Chairman, through you. Absolutely. It's always a fine line, I mean, we strike that balance between getting all the information that we feel planning, city council needs to make good decisions, versus putting the applicant through all kinds of time and expense prior to even having approval, right? So that's a real balancing act, and yeah, I think staff's position for years has been that the more information we have on traffic studies, drainage studies, and so on, is good, but everything that comes through is conditioned, that that stuff has to be approved before they can pull building permits. So, yeah, that's excellent feedback, and I think it's on us to kind of think more about those complex projects, and can we get them to a position where they're more ready to go? So they're not just getting in, in the door, and then knowing they're going to obey it and like that, so. But I think it's maybe more, I think, a policy call at the administrative level than changing codes at this point.
Yeah. Thank you.
Seems to me there's going to have to be a kind of change in the philosophical approach for some applicants, because I know some will come in with an item, you know, with the expectation that if things go smoothly, it will adhere to this timeline, which makes sense to me. But it's, at any point during the process, if there's some type of disagreement, you know, if a lot of neighbors all of a sudden show strong opposition, they'll immediately go back. And I don't know that that's necessarily the wrong thing to do. I mean, if it's proven successful for an applicant, it's hard to say otherwise, so I don't know how we train them better to stop this. Maybe, maybe it would be helpful to figure out where most of these abeyances are coming from. You know, are the applicant requested, is the city saying, "Well, you know, in this particular circumstance, I don't think that you obey it," and I would figure this out. I just don't know. I wouldn't step up to that.
Most abeyance requests are at the applicant's discretion or their request to you. The other part of this conversation, though, goes to the point that you just made, is in the cases, particularly those that are going on a city council, there may need to be discussion, or one of the options to keep from piling these up at planning commission, may be to see what the ability is that in the month, because it's approximately a month between planning commission and city council, what we can do to remedy the situation before it gets to the city council, but not necessarily hold it at the planning commission stage. And so, that's a conversation that can continue to be had on what's the viability, for instance, if you have a special use permit that, you know, you do have some neighbor concerns about, and the applicant is willing to hold a neighborhood meeting, maybe that neighborhood meeting can occur between planning commission and city council. And you guys have done that in a number of cases in the past, but examine, maybe doing that on a more policy, larger scope direction versus on a case-by-case basis, to try to move those cases that are already going to go to city council anyway, move them forward, allow the public an opportunity to have that neighborhood meeting with the applicant, to work through those issues, but allow you guys to also act and make your recommendation on how that item should be handled by the city council.
I think we agree with Mr. Summerville, but just for clarification, turn around times. On paper, it looks like a month. Agenda tech missions can correct me if I'm wrong, and about two weeks is probably the maximum amount of time for revised plans and all that, before it becomes an after the back. I do echo what you're stating, and it'd be a great idea to move that forward, and some of these things between. I just want to make sure the impression is more of a two-week turnaround, a full month to get things done.
I stand corrected. He's absolutely correct. In order to meet the deadlines for our agenda texts in the clerk's office, there's about two weeks between planning commission, in which to make updates that can then make it officially on the record in preparation for the council meeting.
Especially if there are changes, we're going to affect the notification. And a lot of times, those revisions that they would submit would change the notification, and that would really limit the time.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. And I don't know if this is relevant or not, as a commissioner, I find it challenging to receive the agenda one week prior to the meeting. I don't know, I know there's statute that says when it has to come out, but, you know, there's a lot of things that, I even call some people, that say, "I'm on the agenda," and I go meet with them, and I have no clue what they're talking about, because I haven't seen the agenda, I don't have the information. I guess I could call and maybe request, right, to find out, that probably would be the best way to do it. But it's tough to go through those items in five days, basically, if you can, or six, seven days or so. And if you're out of town, up here, out there, it makes it a little, a little tough to go through all eighty items or whatever the items are.
Mr. Chairman, private staff could address that and find out what's the earliest that you could receive your books?
I don't know. Yeah, but what I'm hearing is, I don't know if we could get it any earlier, but you guys are pushed to the limit.
Everything is draft up to this point, we need to roll it out to the end, basically make, we publish the agenda. And we publish it seven days prior, and so that everybody gets it at the same time, no one gets ambushed on, "Well, I read the report before, you got the report," or the ability to read that report. So some of these reports will still be in transition, so if you ask three weeks prior to the agenda, we can give you information about what we're working on, and we'll be more than happy to give you an update on what they're asking, what the request is, and where we are with the process.
I could probably do a better job myself of making more inquiries prior, but then I just puts a lot of burden on you guys to get information together as well. I don't have an answer for it. I don't know. I guess you get it in seven days, it makes it a little, a little...
Mr. Chairman, if I might, for the record, Karen Dolson, the planning director. One of the efforts we've taken on this past year is to start meeting with some of the boards of the development community. And one of the issues that our staff suffers from is that plans come in, and they're, they're there, but over the weeks leading a planning commission, they're still designing, and they are making changes and turning in a revised plan, and a revised plan, revised plan. A lot of times, if we tried to get things done early, then by the time we get to planning commission, that project has significant changes, our report has been wrong. So we've been working with the development community to explain our deadlines and that we really need what's going forward, or we can't be acting on the agenda. So if a balancing act on customer service, how customer-friendly should we be to someone coming in, who said, "I've got, I've closed on this property, and we have this much time to get my financing place, here it is, I need on the next planning commission, and we'll keep getting your things." It's, it's those staff balancing act for us. To get some feedback is valuable for us. Do we continue to work with customers during this time? Or do we say, "What you give us, is what you give us?" We write it up, and we get it to the planning commissioner?
Commissioner Carrer, I have the suggestion, let's work both ways, and that is, I try to be in touch with, in my case, the Mayor Ford Towns office for things pertaining to board six, even though the agenda may not be finalized, and even though they may not know what staff's recommendation is going to be, to kind of give you a heads up as to some of the things that they are expecting on this planning permission agenda. And that kind of helps me, so I'm not just waiting a week before the meeting, or like to get a little bit started.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Vice Chair Slavina, question for Commissioner Carrer. Just seeing if you were able to download the link from the spread.com, if you're still on the website, and you have a clip on each of them, there's a lot of...
Underweb.
Yeah. Okay. Because web is, that would take me two weeks, three weeks to get through, but I don't know, maybe one of the staff members could get together with Commissioner Carrer and show him how to use that, because download's really easy. And then, you know, you have nine hundred pages on just to click one button, and then you have another nine hundred pages on another click and click, so you can just scroll through it instead of going and clicking on the different links. And then, for me, I can read the agenda, then it shows me the site maps, or the aerial maps in color, and then it shows me, you know, the staff description and everything. Then, if I'm looking at a photo, I can go back up, just scroll up, instead of having to go to a different link on the website and clicking back and forth. That's taken eighteen hundred pages of reading from, would take literally a week and a half down to the, maybe, eight hours, so.
What did you set up to see if we're done?
We implemented that script. There's an app that we send out to you each month that has the link to it. It's one of the programs that we get and started going more paperless. We were used to send you those eighteen hundred pages, found it, we found an app that would work for us, so that we send it to you, and so that it is viewable on your iPad, it's viewable on, in any i-device, as well as any Android device.
I remember something, I think, when I first got started, but I didn't really figure out.
We can give you tutorial on that.
Okay, good report. Thank you. On item six, moving on to item seven, according to special yard picture, the staff report format and proposed changes.
Mr. Chairman, this is part of our effort to, we sort of call it, "Why Planning Matters" or planning statement. We're not, when we're communicating with our customers, our constituents, and our elected officials using planning targets, sometimes it's not quite as clear. So as part of that overall effort, we have a number of things that we're doing, but one of them is revising our staff report. And so, Mr. Gebke is going to give a quick update to you on the new staff report format, what we're doing, and why, and then what you can say.
Mr. Chairman, through you, for the record, Steve Gebke, planning supervisor. Basically, the planning commission reports, you know, we've, we've kind of tweaked them here and there since going to... We have tweaked them a little bit since going to be...
I'm going to...
All things on here. All right, the speaker is picking up places, good for the third, so...
Okay, so, in about two thousand nine or ten, we went to consolidate reports, we kind of revamped the staff reports at that time. And they've been tweaked a little bit here and there, but not really significantly. So now, we're looking at not changing them completely, but we're reorganizing them to kind of flow a little bit better. We're going to work on making them a little bit more clear and concise, and cut out some of the repetitious stuff that keeps going into, you know, multiple sections. So with that in mind, basically, as we go through the sections, we're going to keep the recommendations right up front, because that's generally what most people are looking for, is, you know, do they get their approval, or do they get a denial? And so that's, that's the first thing they want to know. One thing that we did move was the notifications. That used to be at the end of the report, we're going to pull that to the front, and put it right up to the recommendations, so you'll know, basically, at the time that the report is published to the, to the web, what was notified to, say, various HOAs, how many notifications were sent out to the community, and also how many responses we got back that were both approval and denial from the public. So it kind of gives you an idea of if it's a controversial item or not. And then, it goes right into the conditions, those are still kept up front, because most people want to know what they're agreeing to and what they're not agreeing to. Moving on from there, we're going to go to the project description, we're going to try to simplify that, make it very quick and concise. We want to make that, or state that in layman's terms as much as possible, so it's basically what is the applicant proposing to do, or what are they asking for? And just make it a very quick and simple description.
Mr. Chairman, through you, question for Steve Gebke. So you consolidate the project description further than what you currently have, but now, I mean, the project description, that might be what it is, it gives you a lot of information. Then we get to the staff analysis, then it's telling us a lot of the same information, but maybe that more, so are you going to try and consolidate that project description even more?
That's correct. Some of the analysis that kind of sneaks into that project description, we're going to try to keep it in the analysis, and that description, like I said, is basically going to be just what is the request? And so that when you go into the analysis, you know what they're requesting, and we don't have to, you know, keep repeating the same things over and over again.
One thing that I do like that staff does in the project description, they give the bold points of what waivers or whatever they're seeking, and if staff is recommending a report, it's not those particular items.
And that we do plan to keep. If, like you say, it is helpful, if it brings those items to your attention, and kind of makes it front and center.
And Mr. Chairman, part of this also, what Mr. Gebke is describing, is also to help staff, because as you've probably seen, some people put more analysis in the description, and, and more description, analysis, and it's sort of hard to standardize, but by making it crystal clear, the description intended to be a higher level, here's what this is, we do all analysis here, we'll be able to standardize how these reports are a little bit better, too, and it'll make it a little more clear for our staff members, so. And then, you know exactly where to go to find it, instead of looking back and forth and trying to find square footage or whatever it is.
The next change, after the project description, we always have the pages and pages of tables, we're going to move those before the end, and get those kind of out of the way, so that it flows from the description to the analysis to the findings, and then the tables will be at the end, where, you know, you can go to them and look at the specifics if you'd like, if you'd like to, you know, and see what the analysis is based on, see what the findings are based on. But that, basically, by bringing that analysis forward, it would flow right into it and make it a lot more conducive to making a decision. That analysis, like I said, that's, that's where we get into the technical analysis, the really in-depth analysis of the project. You know, what's there, what's legal? Was the application submitted as a result of enforcement action, and does it comply with city codes and master plans and so forth? So we'll get into all of that in that analysis. We'll also, you know, provide the impact of approval or denial, as well as, you know, if it's denied, what, what happens then? You know, if we've got a variance for a building and the variance is denied, does that building have to be removed, does it have to be modified? Those kinds of options, and what the applicant might be looking at. So that's, that kind of wraps up the analysis portion. Findings would be next, and those are basically the findings that, and criteria that are found in Title Nineteen for each specific application type. Those will not change. Basically, we're just going to try to keep those short and concise, try not to repeat what's in the analysis, but, but make it easy to understand, so that when you make your recommendation, you can use those for your findings if you choose to do so. And then the tables would remain the way they are, they're just moved to the end. The tables basically establish a record of the specific proposal. Predominantly, they're used for us when we're doing our analysis, and they're also used extensively later in the permit review process, when we're doing our review of plans and permits. permits for buildings and so forth. So the tables will remain, they'll just move to the end where they're not, you don't have to jump back over them to get to the other sections of the report. So with that in mind, I guess we're looking to see if there's any information missing from the reports that the commissioners would like to see. And I guess what items or sections of the report are most important and what can be done to improve it specifically.
I'm just going to think out loud for a minute. Usually when I'm trying to make a record of findings related to a specific item, proposal or I'm in favor of it, I'm looking back through the analysis to find some of that language. I don't know if it would be helpful to have a highlighted item or two that would be reported somehow for a specific finding related to that application. I don't know, I've had my problem going back through, but it just seems to me as we're thinking about this and talking about this that, you know, if someone is going to make a motion, that there would be somewhere on that, that item they could look to.
Steve?
And just hit a couple of items.
Don't the staff reports kind of indicate like what the elements are, especially for what are the findings? And then you kind of, you kind of put an analysis under each little bullet point?
Mr. Chairman, through you, yeah. In the findings sections, basically, for each application type, there's a certain number of findings that have to be addressed. And so we include those in the staff report, and under each one of those, we have a, we try to address them specifically based on the analysis. You know, does it meet Title Nineteen? Is it, you know, compatible with the surrounding area and surrounding uses? So we do have all of that in the findings.
So do you think those should be bolded, Chairman?
I don't know, I'm just, you know, like really thinking out loud, I have no complaint whatsoever because I've always found it easy to go back and be able to find those. I mean, once in a while I have to hunt through.
Maybe make it larger print or make it bolded or a special box around it or something.
Mr. Chairman, what I'm hearing you say is that, and I think this, it'll be, the way this, the new format lays out, it'll be easy and consistent to go right to a certain spot where you'll get the information that you typically rely on. But what I'm hearing is perhaps there's a way that we can somehow emphasize the key findings that led to our recommendation. And then you can understand right away that in all of this stuff, staff's really looking at these, these are the key things. And if we were to stand up and say, we recommend, well, we kind of put it in our report to you anyway, but if something like that, is that kind of what you're thinking?
I like that idea. So just maybe, I don't know, I like the idea of key findings.
We'll look at that and see how we can maybe emphasize that or make that more clear. Now, I'd like to also point out that you'll see the new format at your next, at the June meeting. And so we'll see backstage, great, we're writing it according to what Mr. Gavicki has presented. And then after that meeting, we'll be looking for more feedback as well, once you've kind of seen the format and you've worked with it. And I think it'll especially be valuable as you're downloading it on the app, the nine hundred pages, because it'll flow so nicely for you, I think, so.
Chairman, it may help, like we were in law school to have maybe the conclusion at the beginning, you know, where, like we said, you recommend a denial based upon this.
Right.
And then you always know to go to the top and then see where the recommendation is, and then you see all the downs. I don't know.
I'm eager to see this because it's hard to say what I would like when I really haven't seen the format, so maybe I'll have more. I know Vice Chairman wants to say something.
Mr. Chair, so when you say the key findings, or you talk about order, a variance, you must find that this in the staff states, you know, whatever their finding is. Then number two, that it must meet this requirement, criteria, and then they had better, next finding. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, because as the city attorney said earlier in our meeting, you know, whenever we make a finding, it has to meet certain conditions in order to hold up its other challenge.
Right, whenever you make, whenever you make a recommendation, it has to have certain findings. And so you have to articulate exactly each of those findings that you made to use your conclusions. Just a question or comment to staff, and correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, if it's a rezone, you'll have those key findings at the, at the end. If it's a special use permit, I think you have the key findings. But if it's SDR, you don't have the key findings. And, or, do you? I mean, because there's certain things where I see that and there's others where I don't think it applies to HPA. I don't know that I see that on every staff report, just used to.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Mr. Chairman, through you, those findings are there on each of the reports. They're, they vary a little bit, some are more intense than others. What we could do is, you know, those findings are in that end section, maybe either in the, you know, the more forward ones, maybe in the recommendations area, we could give just a summary of staff findings that we based our denial on. You know, we can look at something along those lines.
Thank you. I just feel that this might be an important time to just speak on the head of this stuff. Having been a government official for many years, I have a deep appreciation for the hard work that many staff does to review each of these proposals from a technical standpoint and to justify recommendations, especially in various sections involving things, yes no. And I understand that. And I see us occasionally, us as a planning commission, see the recommendation for approval or denial, or is the recommendation denial or is it approval? I also realize that there are such things as soft denials. And in those circumstances, we're in a technical denial, it's just called that rather than a part of this, this is important to the community. It's a technical denial based on some chapter of the verse. I see and faces many staff who are so hard to justify the recommendation. And if we go against the recommendation, it's like, damn, you know? And it is heartbreaking for staff. And it really bothers me more than approving a design project based upon the applicant. It bothers me as an old staff member that it's going against the staff's recommendation because a human being bothers me to do that. But I'll continue to do it if I feel that's the case. What I'm asking for is that in those circumstances where a reversal of the staff decision is made, and in particular those where that same reversal is upheld by the city council, if the staff takes note of those circumstances and when the opportunity presents itself, go back and look at that chapter and verse that was used to adjust a technical recommendation that was, you know, just one of these bureaucratic things, and they keep track of them, then after there's two or three that are essentially the same, by George, the rules say we have this conclusion, but in application repeatedly it's coming down the other way, we either accept, give no return, or go back and look at the rule. And so I would just offer the opportunity and the challenge to, in those circumstances exist, change the rules or consider changing the rules. New speech.
Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate that feedback, and that's really mean a lot to staff because we do work hard and sometimes it is a bit challenging. I want to, they'll let you know, we do look at the code quite frequently. We understand that it's not something set in stone, it's very challenging. I mean, almost a lot of what we do is sort of in a gray area. And either you define everything perfectly and then nothing works, or you don't define anything at all and everything works. So we try to find that balancing act. And when we have those controversial or those ones where we're scratching our head going, why are we denying, why does the code say that, well, it's based on the Clean Commission? We'll go back to the office and we get a group around and we really do a deep dive on those portions of the code, trying to figure out, does this make sense? Have things changed? Is there a reason why, you know, this is here the way it is? So we do do that, and we're happy to take direction anytime from the planning commission if you are questioning some, you know, something in the code that maybe you think we need to look at. And unfortunately, we have those requesting councils all the time. So, but anyway, I appreciate that, and I appreciate that feedback a lot, and I want to let you know that we do look at the code on a regular basis.
Thank you. Good report, very cool notes. Ready to move on to the presentation regarding the proposed Beverly Green Historic District nomination on the city's historic property register.
Mr. Chairman, we have a very exciting item that will be coming to you in the coming months on a historic district nomination, and because it's something a little bit different and it's kind of an exciting thing, we asked Mr. Moonie to make the presentation for you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. As Director Ferrogo said, the Beverly Green Neighborhood Association has submitted an application to the City of Las Vegas Historic Preservation Commission to designate the Beverly Green Historic District on the city's historic property register, which we refer to as the local register. The city has worked really closely with the Beverly Green Neighborhood Association and the Nevada Conservation Foundation to host the required meetings and get the required signature. We need fifty-one percent of the property owners to sign off before it even move forward as a nomination to the HPC. Within the district, oh, I'm sorry, can you go back just once? The boundaries, just to point them out, are Oki Boulevard on the north, Rexford on the west, East St. Louis on the south, and Six on the east. Within the district, there are one hundred and seventeen single-family homes and seven multifamily properties. The neighborhood has a nice mix of mid-century architectural styles, there are some traditional ranch, there are some what we call storybook ranch, international modern styles, and all of them are built during the nineteen fifties and early nineteen sixties. The neighborhood meets the criteria for historic designation, mostly because it's, most of the property is over forty years old. It is associated with the city's significant historic history because of the significant community leaders that live there. Many movers and shakers, the Barachi, you know, some other entertainers lived in the neighborhood during the nineteen fifties. Additionally, there were several very prolific, well-known architects that had designed some of the custom homes in there, and one of the best known might be Hugh Taylor, who designed the Desert Inn Casino and also the Morelli House, which is also listed on the local register. And so it has quite a bit of significance with our local district. So this item will be introduced to the Historic Preservation Commission tomorrow. The commission has thirty days to review the nomination report before it is scheduled for a public hearing in the June HPC meeting. Just one thing we would like to point out is the notification radius, which is a thousand feet around the proposed district. In the past, we've had a neighborhood designation where many of the property owners that lived in that thousand-foot radius were confused about where they were. They had some concerns about the district boundaries expanding at some point in the future into this thousand-foot radius. So just to let you know, there's a really long process, that particular neighborhood, we've worked with them for over four years, a very long process before it comes to the commission, the HPC, and the planning commission ultimately, the city council. There are several public meetings, there are design workshops, like I said, we have to get signatures. So never, ever will it be that it automatically expands into those adjacent properties. In the last historic district nomination, several of those property owners came to the planning commission and expressed a lot of opposition about it. So I just wanted to clarify that so that if that occurs in this situation, that, you know, it's understood that it does, impacts for the property owners within the district do not apply to those that are in the notification radius. After the June public hearing at HPC, staff will hold another public meeting with the neighborhood. Again, we'll reinforce the difference between property owners within the boundary, without and outside of the boundary, we'll tell them what the HPC recommended. And if the HPC recommends approval, then it will go to the August planning commission agenda and the September city council agenda. So what are those impacts? If properties are located, designated on the local register, any work requiring a building or zoning permit is reviewed by either myself or the HPC. And that's, that's very simplified, but that's basically it. It depends on the scope. If it's minor in nature, they just want to replace as they know, I can do that, it can straighten it, they come in the building permit and I can do it the same day. If it's a large addition on the front or something of that nature, it goes to the commission. And again, it's only things that require building or zoning permits. So we don't review paint, we don't review landscaping, those types of things. These are all questions that came up with the last historic designation as well. And another question that came up was whether or not we could deny applicants, applications for, say, ramps in front of the house to allow access for wheelchairs or solar panels. The state prohibits us from denying these specific applications. We can only recommend where we think that these additions or this work should occur on the property, but we cannot say, you cannot have a ramp in front of your house. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. There are no additional fees for this HPC review of the permits. There is an appeal period for the HPC recommendation. Designation does run with the land. One of the benefits is that, once designated, the property owners are eligible for HPC person or matching grants to restore their property, but they are not required to restore their property once it is designated. They can do it as is. So that is another question that often is asked during the commission meetings. So the local register, as I, as I just mentioned, there are some impacts to the property owners. The other two types of designation, which are state and national designations, do not have any impacts to the property owners. There is a little bit of, there's a benefit to that in that the national, the state and national registers recognize historic properties, but again, there are no restrictions. However, many of the historic neighborhoods that have come to us for designation, one of their biggest concerns is that they're going to be approached upon commercially. So with our existing local district, which is the Jonas Park District, which is south of Charleston, east of Las Vegas Boulevard, their big concern was commercial approach from Las Vegas Boulevard. And they see historic designation on the local register as an additional tool to protect them from that. So the state and national register would not protect them from that. However, you know, once again, there is that review process that goes through the local There are no additional fees or property taxes that are automatically assessed onto the properties if they are designated on any of the registers. There is a lot of data that show that property values have a tendency to stabilize or increase when a neighborhood is designated, but that does not, you know, it may increase their property taxes incrementally indirectly, but it is not an automatic assessment. And locally, we have one hundred and eighty-two properties listed on our register, and that's, the bulk of that is the Jonas Park Historic District. We have five hundred and sixty-five properties on the state and national register, and those are, the bulk of those are also historic districts in purpose where Jonas Park, we have the two parks, Blight and Park, and Lorenzo Park, which have local properties in the history of the district. So we have quite a few properties, and I think Jonas Park is, has been a very good example of a successful historic district. So hopefully we can move forward to that green one, but I hope just to clarify some of the questions that might come up during the meetings.
Excellent. Can we answer questions? I'm studying. Okay, good report. Moving on to item, presentation regarding the review of the analysis of variances in the site development of the evidence.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Trump, your questions a couple items ago is really what this item is all about. Variances, exceptions, deviations, waivers.
Variances, exceptions, deviations, waivers, and those are areas that are very challenging for staff, um, well, I think for all of us. The development standards in Title Nineteen are based on policy, goals, objectives established in a variety of master planning and elements and special area plans, uh, to build the kind of city that, um, the planning commission, city council, and, and, um, citizens over time have sort of envisioned, um, certain setbacks, certain, um, amounts of landscaping and buffers and all this kind of stuff. So, um, the, the, quite frequently, when staff recommends denial of a variance or waiver, the planning commission, city council recommend approval. Um, so, given that this is one of these areas where we do some head scratching and trying to figure out, is the code right? Do we need to look at the code? Do we need to be more thorough in our analysis to help facilitate decision-making and so on? Um, staff took a, a deep dive, did a lot of research and analysis. Um, over the last ten years, we averaged over a hundred variations approved every year. We averaged over two hundred waivers and deviations from code. And so, um, Mr. Lowenstein is going to give a report of our findings and, um, talk a little bit about, um, what that means.
All right. Everybody's favorite thing, knowledge, right? Statistics. I don't know if this is going to slide, but I do know the first.
Mr. Lowenstein, can you get a, a mic for the clerk?
I don't know for no.
Well, for the clerk to pick up the recording.
Yeah, double fist. So, variances in Title Nineteen, the planning commission, city council, um, the criteria as a zone ordinance is that non-granted variance in order to permit uses in a zoning district in which use is not allowed, AKA use variance. Uh, it's a varied minimum spacing requirement, so vary the distance between a billboard and another billboard, as an example. A relief hardship that is still, like, personal, self-graded, or financial. And that's always the, the sticking point one. Usually, a irregular shaped lot can prevent somebody from developing out their lot in a particular manner, and they actually have a hardship. In other times, it's just they want it. Okay, so key findings on the variances. Between two thousand and two and present, we've had fifteen hundred and sixty-one variances and since the adoption of Unified Development Code, we've had four hundred and fifty-eight of them. Uh, setbacks, parking, and wall variances are the most common. And residentially, you find setbacks in walls and bleak streets as being the most common variances being applied for. And in commercial, you find parking setbacks and signage being the most common, uh, variances requested. Staff recommendations of denial are often approved by planning commission or city council. And variance deviations approximately, uh, deviate approximately about seventy percent from the standard, um, whether approved or not. So, over all those requests, you're looking at approximately seventy percent deviation from, uh, whatever standard it was. So, this is a pie chart of all of the variances by height, um, since two thousand and two. And, uh, the bulk of it right here is in the blue is setback requirement. And that's, uh, approximately thirty percent of that entire variance count. Next is parking, and then it's walls, and then they actually have coming up here residential adjacency, which would be more of like what's all the commercial development coming in. And then signage, and then we keep going on through all these other categories, which continue to go down in lower and lower numbers. So, since, uh, the adoption of Unified Development Code, which was in, what, March sixteenth, two thousand and eleven? Got a thumbs up from the man. Um, we had, uh, the number one thing being setbacks. Once again, uh, parking, walls, and then signage. So, then again, it follows the same pattern. So, by zoning district, uh, what we have here, the blue, is, uh, representative residential. And then you have in this, uh, red color is the commercial. And then special areas is in the purple, that tends to spike a little bit in, in certain areas. So, in residential, you see that there is a huge spike in the, uh, since the adoption of Unified Development Code, residential setbacks, uh, followed by commercial, and then actually in special area plans. Uh, commercial parking variances tend to way outnumber anything in the residential. Those residential would be more than likely multi-family developments, because they would be residential zoning districts. Uh, walls, we're pretty close on, uh, between commercial and residential, uh, requesting wall, um, deviations may have the height or some other requirements. And then obviously signage, for the most part, is overwhelmingly commercial and to some degree in civic, because the civic zoning district has, um, uh, development standards that related back to a professional office and a group standard. On setbacks, uh, some of the key findings, um, and when drilling into the setback variance request. Majority of the setback, uh, variances relate to either single-family homes, commercial buildings, or accessory structures. Uh, the predominant request was for thirty to seventy percent deviation from whichever setback standard they were requesting. Since the adoption of Unified Development Code, sixty-one percent were residential variances and twenty-three percent commercial variances requested approval of building setbacks. And then accessory structures comes in as a third, as the third most sought-after variance, um, which we see on our agenda all the time for accessory structure, class two, AKA the garage or the casita, which we're working on aligning which portion of that. So, on parking being the, uh, second most predominant one, another, um, predominant request was for ten to thirty percent deviation from code requirement. So, we try to get a better sense of how much parking people are deviating from, um, from this analysis. Since two thousand and two, parking deviations composed eighteen percent of all variance requests. And then since the Unified Development Code, it composed sixteen percent. So, it's basically on far, and as time goes on, that number will probably equalize. Since the adoption of Unified Development Code, eighty-one percent of the parking variance requests related to commercial development and only eleven to request multifamily development. So, from that, uh, you can see overwhelming as our permissible uses and their associated parking requirements are something that, um, um, commercial development tends to ask for approval. Walls and fences, uh, the top two requests of deviations from wall standards are perimeter screen walls at forty-four percent and open visibility requirements, front yard walls at about twenty-nine percent. Uh, the requests are about twenty to forty percent deviation code requirement. So, if you have an eight-foot wall and you wanna go to ten, you're at the twenty percent. If you wanna go to a fourteen-foot wall, you're at a forty percent. Uh, since the adoption of the Unified Development Code, forty percent, forty-seven percent of the wall variances were related to commercial development and only thirty-seven were related to residential development. Uh, from there, this is a slide that shows the council and commission's action versus staff recommendation. On this column here, uh, this is staff's recommendation for approval. Out of all of those staff recommendation approval, um, during the course of time, we had one denial of recommendation approval. The blue, just to note, means another thing, another action happened, withdrawal, um, table, or, or something other than approval or denial. And as far as recommendations of denial, we've had ninety-five, uh, applications upheld at their recommendation of denial and eight hundred and sixty-one recommendations of approval. So, if you go to the next slide, Thomas, do you have any comments?
Would you go back to the chart, the pie chart with what was for?
Okay. Yeah, before we get into the, uh, the waivers and the exceptions, be interested to kinda hear your feedback and reaction to the data that Peter presented.
Are there some areas we should be looking at? Do you see the same things that, that we're seeing in the data?
That, that just made true with me that way on it. Yeah, that's, it's, it's nice to see it summarized, but, uh, yeah, that's exactly what we're seeing over the week.
So, the, the questions that we're trying to figure out from a, a staff perspective is, at this time, is okay, what do we do? Number one is this setback. Should we be looking at those setbacks? Um, should, should we not? Are the, do you feel that when they come before you, they're truly exceptional circumstances? Or is there something that you're seeing over and over again that we should be looking at so we aren't seeing some of the variants? Is what we're asking?
In other words, is the code sort of working and providing the deed where appropriate? Or is, are there things that we should be thinking about changing or?
I guess the legal, legal perspective. Should they, they be considered variants or waivers? You know, should that be considered a waiver? A waiver has a, a less of a standard. Unfortunately, the council kind of vacillates back and forth depending on who's, you know, in office at that point in time as, as to whether or not they wanna make something a, a waiver. Then that gives them more discretion, but then it also makes it inconsistent, more inconsistent, because they don't know from case to case to case what they did in the previous case. At least with the variance, there's a higher standard, so.
So, you also, like, put the policy at that point?
Correct, yeah. Once approved, it goes to the property. There, there's always talk about changing some of the variance, variance things to a waiver type of, um, requirement. It's a lesser standard.
Mr. Chairman, to the chair, how much is this skewed or not based on things like, let's say, the rural reservation or rural areas where they don't have, uh, they don't want complete streets, right? And so, we're, we're granting that variance or waiver to not have that, then it shows up in this slide and/or say setbacks in downtown where everybody's asking for a setback because there's limited land. Is that skewing this at all or is that?
Um, that's an excellent question and it's good observation. Yeah, we're, we're starting to see that become more common. It's an increasing, but I don't, I don't know that it's necessarily skewing the analysis right now, but, yeah, that, the, uh, the, uh, complete streets is still relatively small, but it is growing. You're right, that we do more and more development out in that, uh, urban, less urban area. I mean, correct, there's no rural area in cities, so.
Thank you, Trevor. Thank you. My observation after seeing that is that reflects what's going on and so, it's just the fact of life. But I think we're going to see a greater number of different types of variances come forward as the city pursues addressing the issue of the items about city motion handles. See a lot more people come forward. Most of those arguments that the variances receive are people that, well, we're right against where the county was, we ran next, and now we're still gonna be in a little preservation zone and taking away where I exercised the force. We're gonna get a lot more of those in the next few years, uh, to complete the annotation process. Also, without celebrating those numbers, I thought, or I would, would hope that this is the way it works. We have a recommendation from staff for, uh, for approval of the paper, and there's no opposition that that request somebody automatically be to go on the consent agenda. Staff, provided posted is pretty true. I wonder how many items a month could go on the, um, consent agenda. And the burden of proof that might be necessary for consent agenda might be less in which we have to dedicate staff time to do a balance of, of full focus. I have a, might be challenged with the amount of information.
I'm sorry, I'm having a moment here, but I, I think that you still have to find, get those findings. I think those findings still have to be there. So, I think if you put on consent, those findings aren't there. I mean, you have staff, but you don't have yours. So, I don't know if.
And you approve the, except the staff report to prove it, aren't you in fact, underlining the?
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we, we sort of do do this, and some of those, uh, applications are more routine and kind of a no-brainer. We don't spend nearly as much time on the analysis and the description and stuff, um, but we still have all the components and we still have everything we need for the record.
But I think, I think on most variances, staff recommends denial. I mean, isn't that correct? When you guys recommend denial, I'm pretty much.
Like, I eight hundred and some, something.
That's what I'm saying. And so, it's, I hate to sound harsh, but if this, um, let me figure out what this. The variance standard's supposed to be very strict and the, probably supposed to be very, uh, rarely given, uh, but then, like I said, if the, if the applicant makes a good case as to why that the property is, as staff, it's different than what staff indicated. That it's not, it's irregularly shaped, it's shallow, it's all, you know, and then a lot of times you get a lot of applications where, you know, because it's already something commonplace in the neighborhood that you're doing. So, I think those findings still need to be found there. I don't think you can put it on the consent agenda, but.
Through you, Chairman. Mr. Trevor, to the first part of your question about putting on consent agenda, we do facilitate a one plus one motion, which is one motion, one load for items that you have no issues with a rule right to approve. If there are variances that we find that we recommend approval, we're more likely to put it on that portion of the agenda. Um, but if we load that agenda with all of the approvals and all you have is denials on the rest of the agenda, um, if that's something you guys are meaningful to, we can do that, but, um, we try to give you, uh, a little bit of variety and see some of the concepts out there.
But sometimes it's down to efficiency, so please give us some feedback. If it's all approval, we can put that on one plus one and you can fill out what you want, save yourselves a lot of time, but we don't have that.
I don't wanna spend a lot of time listening to slam ducks.
And, and even sometimes as approval, if we get a lot of constituent, there's a lot of cars that come in, we're not gonna put it on one plus one.
Right.
We have people that talk about it, so.
And you get, maybe you should also look and see whether some of those can be changed away versus variances.
That may help. What's the key difference?
A variance is a very strict requirement. They all go to property, the variance is a very strict requirement where required that the property be, you know, irregularly shaped, um, shallow or, you know, shallow or some kind of easement running through it, or something that makes it not able, you not able to meet the zoning requirement. A waiver is just, it may meet it, but you're just, it, it's a less harsh standard and it's, it's, they're more easily given because you just feel that, because, because there are ten of them, other, ten other ones in the neighborhood, this is what it gonna hurt, you know? Having a lot of one is gonna hurt. That's a less strict standard. But again, I think in that is you get a lot of inconsistency and sometimes the council does, wants a little more stridency put on those, on those items so that they, they're not, it's not fully to the discretion.
Right, like, for example, setbacks, we wouldn't wanna make that, meaning less of a standard because, and it's pretty important. I mean, people don't want things built any closer to the, to their neighbor's property line, or the neighbors don't want them, their neighbor built something to the property line. We have, you know, issues with, you know, fire safety and other things. We don't want fires to credit easily and all that kind of stuff, so. But a lot of those, uh, variances that are approved, and I don't think we have the data yet, but we're, we're, we're still working on it, are things that came through code enforcement where they built the accessory structure too close and it's an existing thing, or it's a carport or something that's, that's next to the wall, and planning commission, city council look at it and go, well, it's been there for thirty years and it seems to be okay, you know, we'll go ahead and grant the variance so they can continue along with that.
Right. And that may just, may not necessarily meet the variance standard, but it may meet a waiver standard, so.
Vice Chairman, Mr. Trevor.
I think on certain things, like last month, we had a, um, a front yard fence that come before us that, like, separated a house from, like, a casita, uh, or a gazebo or whatever it was, but really you couldn't even see the fence. It was in the front yard, but it almost looked like a side yard fence. Stuff like that, is it really a variant? So, I mean, should we look at things such as that as, um, um, really requiring them to go through the planning commission? Other things, like, from my understanding, Steve or one of the other planners kind of, we only have one type of fence. I mean, it's pretty much two-foot masonry and three-foot block, I mean, metal screening. I think that's the worst thing that I've ever heard. I mean, I, I come from Dallas, I mean, you could have different types of fences. I mean, you could have, uh, I mean, they don't allow channeling in your front yard, but, I mean, you could do metal fence, or you could do a block wall fence, or you could do wood fence, or you could do this and that. But to say that everybody in Las Vegas needs to put masonry with three-foot of that wrought iron fence on its top, I think is, is horrible. Uh, so I'd like to see the staff can take a look at that and accomplish some alternatives.
An excellent comment.
To clarify though, it's actually, that's just the simplest solution. The requirement is that the top three feet be fifty percent open. So, if you can achieve that, and we have plenty of people who achieve that through masonry with, you know, CMU that's got perforations in it, um, metal, full metal fences that because of the way they orient them, again, have perforation for those top three feet to create a visibility. Um, so, just for clear record, it's just, that seems to be the simplest one that people do, and so that's what we illustrate. But the requirement is that just the, of the five feet that you're allowed, the top three feet have to be fifty percent open.
The, 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 the standard, if anybody, if you want, they can probably correct me, is the line of sight using a front yard area for life safety.
is the line of sight using a front yard area for life safety and sense of being controlled by the place department to have, or you could throw a tiny wire fence or something. I believe that was the intent behind the original statute.
I just think, I, I still think it's too strict. I mean, because if I want to have it, you know, more than fifty percent open all the way down to the ground, or if I want to come up three feet, I mean, in certain areas, we've allowed ten, twelve, fourteen feet on alte because that's what, how that whole area is, you know, turned out. But, you know, in addition to it, when we get the staff report, if they have a pillar that comes up that is eight feet, they're seeking a variance for eight-foot fence. Well, one part of their fence, or maybe the archway or something going into a property, is fifteen feet. They're seeking a fence variance for fifteen feet. I think it confuses the public and, and just the way that we measure them and everything else from the lowest, lowest part in that area.
I think, Mr. Chairman, that's good feedback. We'll absolutely take a look at that and see if there are ways to provide a little bit more flexibility with that portion of code, so that it doesn't rise the level of the standard. And just one quick comment, talking about all the variety of fences in Texas, I thought the motto was don't fence me in, so.
I don't think that's Texas motto, is it? That's Nevada. You've seen the National Nevada commercials they got there, don't mess with Texas. Texas is don't mess with Texas.
Ten minutes for my comments, and I'm not finished, so I'd like to have another comment. Setbacks. Dr. Horton, Richmond American, Dr. Horton, Dr. Horton. These builders come in, and they have a tentative map, but they, I mean, there's certain setbacks to a property line. Now, if they're coming in with a tentative map and they're trying to get whatever, I mean, whatever's on, let's just say it's already zoned, but then they have a tentative map, and within that zone district, you need this much of a setback. However, they're building twenty-five homes or fifty homes, and ten percent of them are not meeting that setback, and they're off by a couple of feet. I mean, as a developer that's developing that, that community, it seems like there should be a little bit of flexibility there. When, we used to have something called RPD, and I don't know why it went away, but residential plan development, and you go in and set up your own development standards. And I actually had a RPD thirteen for downtown, or development communities. And that went away. That's what this whole new ordinance about, if you're over fifty acres and whatever that is coming before us. But there should be some sort of mechanism to allow them to come, come through and adjust those property lines, or say, hey, we, we're not meeting enough of this percentage lots. And then the staff still feels that, you know, they need to come before the planning commission, instead of saying, okay, variance number one for lot ten, variance two for lot twelve, variance three for lot fifteen, variance. Some, I noticed times where we have twelve to fifteen variances on one project. Why couldn't we put all variances that are on one project onto, and maybe it's because it has to go to that particular legal lot, but why couldn't, before you, you got, or before you answer or address that, why couldn't we have variance that list all those APNs, and then if we say, you know, we approved this one, and we approved this one, but we're not, we're going to strike this lot because it doesn't work, or allow us to group them together and, you know, vote on them. That just needs to be...
That's one.
I agree.
And then, it's more of a record, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, City Attorney Mark Scott, it's more of a record-keeping issue, because each of those items is a, is a separate partial number and a separate project, within a project. So it would, it would be very difficult to keep the records, I'm assuming for planning as well as for the clerk, to be able to distinguish one lot from the other if you're closing them together.
The chair has to read each one of those, and they're pretty much the same thing.
Yeah, it came up with a kind of a...
Yeah, it came with a shortened version.
A solution, you know, we have to read in every application, and applicant name, and address, so we shorten it.
But since they're separate parcels, so they have that, they have to have separate approvals or denial of this parcel.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that we have been working on in the public office with is to try to do that for our agenda, is to list a project, so that the public and everybody can see, here's one Dr. Horton project, and then here's what they're asking for in that. One of the current limitations is the number of characters that can be in those, that the work system will allow in a title. So to list twenty or thirty variances, we can't get them all in the characters, like, we only have, but they are out to get a new system, and that's one of the things that we've asked, is that we could have a project with that section, and then possibly work with the city attorney's office, and if we're going to approve the whole thing, be able to vote on all of that.
But it, but it still has to have a title. I mean, each one has to have a title, so if you go back and research it, and try to find this particular lot, you've got to have a, an approval for that lot. So you, if you did it that way, where you have one heading thing, Dr. Horton, and this is just an example, for Dr. Horton, or Dr. Horton, where just one project, and you have to still list some A, B, C, D, E, F, G, as many lots as are.
It could be similar to a one plus one, or consent agenda, where instead of saying consent agenda, we'd say, Dr. Horton project, et cetera, et cetera, be able to vote on the whole section. That would be my drizzle.
I got it.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed that we're getting close to five, and I, and I, this has been really, really good and helpful feedback. I'd like Mr. Longstein to get through the exceptions and waivers portion of the presentation, and then if you're pleasure, we can talk about the last two items, the one we wanted to do there.
Just before we do that, I drink, I drink a little bit of Howard's.
Okay.
Pretty schmooing, anything like that. All right, so we are now to item ten, Mr. Longstein?
No, no, it's the same item, it's just like part of the presentation.
Oh, so we're now to the site development plan review.
Part due.
There you go.
All right.
Will you go on?
Will you go on to there? So, in a safe development plan review, there are an ability to approve a waiver or exception to certain development standards in unified building. The line of commission city council may grant a waiver or exception as part of the site development review, and if it is shown convincing, it's a ten-eleven, that will not compromise some of the objectives of the city itself, based on safeguarding public interest, substantial removal of standards, and will not detriment to public health safety or welfare. Key findings for exception waivers. Since two thousand six to two thousand fifteen, there have been twenty-four hundred and fourteen individual exception waivers, and since the adoption of unified development coverage, been six hundred and forty-six. Landscape buffers and trees are most common exception or waiver as part of the site development review. Staff recommendations of denial are often overturned by planning commissioner city council, and on average, waivers and exceptions requested deviate approximately seventy-four percent from the standard whether approved or denied. So you have another plot chart here with the overall, two thousand six to two thousand fifteen. Perimeter landscape buffers and trees are the lowest, surrounding at fifty-four percent of all the requests, followed by parking lot landscaping at fifteen percent of the tier, and then sidewalk streetscape and amenity zones, which, because this covers two different versions of Title Nineteen, so there's a little bit of... Next slide, please. So with perimeter landscape buffers and trees, deviations from the perimeter landscape requirements represent fifty-four percent of all the request waivers and exceptions. Sixty-six of all the requests are related to commercial and industrial development. Of all site development plan reviews approved between two thousand six to two thousand fifteen, we have six thousand two hundred and ninety-two trees of the thirteen thousand and thirty-nine required were approved. And then if you take that number, that thirteen thousand times it by the four shrubs that are required for each tree, that's how many shrubs were given relief from planting. So on parking lot landscaping, the second most requested waiver or exception, they come in at fifty percent of all the requests. The requests into a parking lot planer finger, what we call fingers, and parking lot trees and shrubs, sixty-seven percent of all parking lots given are related to commercial industrial development, and fifty percent of the requests are related to multifamily. So sidewalk streetscape and amenity zones, it represents about, based about nine percent of all the requests waiver or exceptions. An average deviation is about fifty-eight percent from standards. Sixty percent of all the requests were in commercial industrial built property, as well as thirty-four percent were in special area plans. This is where the downtown centennial plan, you see waivers of streetscape requirements of park site genres, or architectural. Some of the amenity zones were at planting, that's where that, that one, that's where that number comes. The other, special area plan, that's predominant, town center. Five percent of the requests were residential zone, residential property, and sixty percent of the requested deviations were within the downtown area. So on the next slide here, you have the percent deviation from standard. In the blue is perimeter landscape buffers, red is parking lot landscaping, and green sidewalk amenity zones. And as you can see, the averages on sidewalk drop seven fifty-eight, but right here at the perimeter landscape buffers and requirements is usually about ninety to a hundred percent of the requirement. So that's where people are coming in for zero-foot landscape buffer adjacent to the north property line, or what have you. This is the breakdown of commission action, council commission action versus staff recommendations. Based on staff recommendation or approval, we only have two overturned, and based on staff recommendation or denial, we have forty-five upheld, and nine hundred and twenty-seven approved.
That's all?
Just a little bit. So the next steps for policy direction, we're looking at a better job of educating applicants as to the purpose of various waivers and exceptions, and looking for alternatives and design, so that they don't need to utilize any of those as a mechanism. Secondly, further analysis on approval of variances, waivers and exceptions, that you know, need standard city objectives, to look at what are the trends, what are the commonalities within those top groups, get a better handle on, okay, well, we're looking at walls, okay, whereas out of walls, there's eight different standards, which is the predominant one. Is there something to approach in that? Is there a, an alternate mechanism to address that? Reevaluation of standards for parking setbacks, landscaping and processes for variances, waivers and exceptions. So is there something in the procedural side of things that can be modified to address? But ultimately, we're looking to substantiate the safeguarding of public safety, welfare, and health. Just because a lot of variances are requested doesn't mean they're totally wrong. It doesn't, and these standards are meant to, you know, provide, you know, better environment, sustainable environment for future generations, et cetera. And sometimes there's a recourse for belief, sometimes it's just somebody desires it. But we will take an in-depth look at the data with some additional analysis from outside data, such as property values. Because just looking at the variances, when you, you brought up RPDs, Mr. President, there was about forty-four variances for open space, which was the requirement. The benefit of getting an RPD was to provide the open space, but we got huge number of variances from that open space requirement. So they get all the benefit and nothing for the community, so.
Then money goes back into the parks system to improve the parks in the neighborhood if they don't need that open space requirement.
No, the LULF was only in Low Mountain West, in Low Mountain, that they contributed to the parks. Other places only have a regional construction tax. We contributed fifty grand to parks, so. Well, thank you.
Could you go back to the price?
Hi, Chair.
Hi, Chair.
So here again, be very interested in your sort of thoughts, feedback, reactions to this data. I feel compelled, as chief sustainability officer, also my fellow, to point out that there are seven thousand trees that were never even given a chance.
Well, I'll be the first. I'm disappointed that in those numbers, those surprise me, and I think we've sent a long message to the applicants based on...
I would agree, but also if some of these, which I think if I could, they didn't have two or three trees, they could put in, however you look at the picture, there's tons of trees going around the site. So when it comes down to stuff like that, if it doesn't involve too many expenses, why just don't put in the trees? Sorry, you have to put some trees, but aside, they can be a little case-by-case basis, if you'll just look at it a little bit closer. And we've got to find a way to get rid of that green fence, centennial fence, and downtown centennial plan. That's what a lot of these, from their landscape, yeah, walls, fences, screening, I think. It doesn't make any sense, because we're trying to create, walk the community and allow people to go straight from the parking lot up to the street, and walk with their lawn, and we just shove them through to the corner of the property and herd them to the fence like they're cattle. Now, that's something we used to say back in Texas, it was very good. And so, anyways, that's my comments.
Yeah, I'll add to that to the chair on the disenternal fence. I also hear the spec on that, the cost of the maintenance to meet the detail, as opposed to maybe some other decorative things that could be done.
And nobody likes it, nobody wants to put in them. So, and it just doesn't fit with a lot of projects. Build a nice, beautiful, modern project and put this suburban-looking green fence around it.
Chair, Andrew, what's your pleasure on, I know we're at five o'clock, continue?
You've had plenty of presentations on the downtown master plan. We will have to, at some point, come back to talking more about the implementation phase, that's very important, and we're looking at some dramatic changes to how we think about and look at development regulations in the downtown, and I'm pretty concerned about committing that. So that may, that could easily be a workshop all in itself, which may be, I think, since we're talking about all. So I think we're okay if we want to pass on that one. Code enforcement, Mrs. Zuna is our code enforcement supervisor, I was going to talk a little bit about, when they're in the field of forcing the standards of condition and the rules that are applied and, and stuff, some of the things that they see. I don't know, Miss, what time is your presentation?
I can do it probably pretty fast.
So it's up to you. We're happy to hold that until either the planning commission meeting, or, or if you want to take another five minutes and let...
I didn't do it. Government pass, or private sector pass?
I was in a meeting on the third street of park development, and I was told by constituent that we moved way too fast, so. As the government agency, we've moved fast, so.
Commissioner Cherry was taking your praises when we were going to the timelines, before you even got to the session. I thought it was like, wow.
Mrs. Zuna, floor shorts. Okay. So as Tom stated, I am Vigiuz and a code enforcement supervisor. We are now with the Department of Planning, and our purpose for code enforcement is to promote, develop, and support the safe, healthy neighborhoods through partnerships and education and compliance. So our planning division, they create the code, and we go out and enforce it. Sometimes we get a little confused, and our interpretations may not match up with the rest of the world's. So we do the best we can. But we try to help preserve property values, enhance quality of neighborhoods, give residents the opportunity to express their concerns about maybe the neighbors around them, and we try to treat everybody the same, regardless of what ward they're in. We have a total of seventeen employees, two code enforcement supervisors... We have a total of seventeen employees, two code enforcement supervisors, one inspector, eleven code enforcement officers, three ASAs who support us. We have a total of a hundred and thirty-five square miles that we cover, which equates to fifty-seven thousand citizens per officer for them to serve. And the number of households are almost twenty-one thousand. We have a very large amount of issues out there with our little number of staff. But go ahead to the next slide. Our responsibilities are reinforced in Title Nine nuisance code, Title Sixteen building code, which includes all non-permitted structures, dangerous buildings. So if it catches fire, we're responsible for following through, making sure somebody's either going to fix it or if it's so damaged, we're going to demo it. We deal with all open and accessible buildings, making sure that they get secured. Housing codes, complaints which are by tenants, if they have issues on where they're living, we assist them with that. And we enforce the uniform development code. And all, all of our complaints are, well, we do complaint initiated enforcement. And we do that regarding whichever code title it is, we'll take complaints on anything. We'll, we'll take complaints on Tom's neighborhood, you know, I mean, it doesn't matter. We're, we're everywhere, so.
What about Tom though?
Well, Tom, we don't.
We don't have a staff.
Yeah, pigs, goats, horses, that's us. We try to get out and complete our first inspection within forty-eight hours. Most of the time that's a very reasonable timeframe for us unless you've had a super duper wet, wet spring and the weeds are up to here and then everybody is upset about weeds, which is not a priority issue for us. Our priorities are vacant properties, green pools, open accessible buildings, stuff like this. You know, everybody wants to live to a pool with a garden in it, you know. So, but in that, you know, a lot of zoning stuff falls under that. And we address over eleven thousand complaints a year. Average number of inspections per case are three. And that's, you know, that's pretty good. Usually, most cases are closed within twenty-seven days and last year we did ninety-eight abatements. We've already surpassed that, most of our abatements this year, almost ninety-nine percent of them were all for open accessible buildings, which is what we do. But hazards, so back one slide. So ninety percent of our complaints that we do, our violations that we deal with are building violations. Fifty-three percent is nuisance and one percent is hazards, which are green pools, open accessible, stuff like that. And twenty-seven percent of what we deal with are zoning violations. We can have cases that'll have weeds, cars parked in the yard, which is zoning, and a tree blocking the sidewalk, which is obstruction, which we don't even mention. But, I mean, so it could be, we could find anything when we're out there. Next slide. So out of the zoning violations, most of them are, the majority, seventy-three percent are for residential vehicle violations. And then sixteen percent are for sign violations, eight percent are residential standards, one percent is commercial standards and then two percent is this other, which I have no idea what other is, but it could be, I don't know. Trying to think of something really funny, I can't. But anyways, regardless, we're, we're, we use the zoning code like our second bible, so let me just say that. Okay, so the next slide, this is the type of building code violations that we usually address. Non-permitted structures is the most, which usually includes probably some sort of variance it's needed because it's in the setback area or it goes all the way to the property line or it's in the front yard. And so about thirty to forty of our cases per year on average end up coming to planning to come down and apply for either a variance or to, you know, take care of whatever they need to. If they're not animal related. Animal related almost always needs an SDR and, and a variance and an SUP and anything else you can throw at them. Nuisance code violations, basically it's, the, most of it is refuse, waste, dead vegetation, fee, storage, property maintenance issues. Next slide. So as I was saying, most of our complaints come in, they're initiated by complaints from people who live in the area. Sometimes the officers will initiate complaints when they're out in the area. If they see, you know, they go to a house and it's got weeds this high, but the house next door and the one next door, the weeds are ten feet high and nobody's addressed them in years. For whatever reason, people will call in on whatever house they want. So the officers try to, you know, look at the whole neighborhood and address it. Finals, final zoning inspections, the six forty. This is something that we just took over this year. And then we also do annual planning inspections. So for zoning enforcement, we addressed all issues such as landscaping conditions for commercial property, home occupation violations, you know, you got the guy next door who's, who's got a backyard full of cars and he's selling parts from his house, but he agreed that, well, I am going to keep my cars at a commercial location and just handle, you know, the office stuff. Yeah, that's, it never happens that way. Vehicle residential violations, that includes everything from vehicles parked in store on the yards to commercial vehicles. Somebody's bringing home their tow truck, parking surfaces where they are allowed to park on, inoperable vehicles, how long they can be on site, junk wrecked vehicles need to be removed, those type of issues, number of vehicles. Another biggie that's up and rising is unlicensed short-term rentals and party houses, which is, go ahead.
I apologize, I have a question about that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. So the unlicensed short-term rentals and party houses includes like the Airbnb homes or, is there a special permit that they have to pull from, is it business licensing or from the city or so, or designated home as a Airbnb home or rental home or party home? Then they have to, how's that work? Or do you just say, "I'm going to list my home on Airbnb, somebody comes in there and they throw a party?"
Mr. Chairman, two different issues.
Okay.
Renting on Airbnb or homeway or courses and then like that. Short-term rental right now is renting the entire unit. We have an ordinance coming forward, but I believe will be in the planning commission, is it next? Have they already seen it? Probably in June. That adds space within a dwelling. So right now, if you were to technically the Airbnb where you're renting out one room, you're going to live there, you're going to rent out one room, short-term rental for weekends, would be considered a bed breakfast. So we're bringing forward an ordinance to consolidate that so that anyone wanting to rent for less than thirty days, one room or the entire structure would be a short-term rental. What we're seeing in these neighborhoods is a lot of proliferation. So you saw at your last planning commission, one of the first short-term rentals where there were others in that neighborhood coming forward. And we're seeing that, if we look at the maps, when we go on to Airbnb, we're seeing a lot more in those neighborhoods. They do need a license.
They need a license now for a short-term rental license.
They need a short-term rental license and that can only be granted if there's not another short-term rental within six hundred and sixty feet.
And that would come from which department do you get that?
They usually come to the business licensing, they're first referred to planning to check for that distance separation. And their alternative is if there is another short-term rental within that space requirement, they would have to apply for variance.
Special use permit.
Sorry, special.
Special use, and then would that come in front of planning commission?
Yes.
For the rental license or the SUP?
Not for the license, for the SUP.
Thank you.
Okay, so along with that though, is party houses, which are not allowed. If you have a house that somebody is just continually renting out for events or weddings, that's not a permitted use of a single-family residence. So we would investigate and tell the property owner that they're not allowed to do it. Rental of properties regarding the number of unrelated residents, four people who are unrelated can live together, five people cannot. So we also regulate, well, regulate and investigate that. And animals such as anything found out in the Northwest, alpacas, cows, pigs, whatever, buffalo, yeah, llamas. We've seen it, we've dealt with it and we'll, we'll see probably sometime soon for another one. But this is one of the cases that did come before you as a result of code enforcement complaint initiated investigations. Five twenty Campbell, this is the way the, it looked when it came before you. Go to the next slide, this is the way it looks right now today. And they're almost completed with the project and it's funny because I believe councilwoman gave them a sixty, or a six-month requirement to have the project completed and I believe we're over a year and a half past that. But they actually are almost completed now, so it's, you never know which direction some of these projects are going to go. Sometimes it's a lot of handholding afterwards and just us making sure that they're going through the process and doing what they should do. They may say one thing to you guys and to council and then they decide after they've got the approval that they're going to do something else. Next slide. We get many complaints about people renting businesses on properties. This picture over here to the right was a guy that wanted to make diesel on his property, which is definitely not a single-family use. And then this guy was fixing and selling appliances. So we deal with those kind of issues. Another big issue that we get a lot of complaints on are classic vehicles. Everybody loves to work on their own car at their own timeframe. And actually, we're, and code enforcement staff is in the process of putting some suggestions together to make code changes on that because it's very hard to keep them all in line and they all want to work at their own pace. So we've decided that we don't like their pace, we want to make it our pace. But we'll see how that goes. Next slide. We also do zoning enforcement. As I was saying, this year, code enforcement took over the final zoning inspection, which is the six forty on a building application. The building department handled that from two thousand and nine till this year. And we just started performing these. These are going out, making sure that all the projects that are being completed are adhering to the code requirements that you guys are approving and the council's approving. And so we're looking at things like measurement of signs, verifying compliance with site plans, elevations, proof conditions, verified setbacks, subdivision walls are being built to the specifications that they agree to and landscaping plus parking requirements. Next slide. So here's, here's a sample of a project that in April, one of my guys went out and did the final inspection on. And this is what he found. The handicap parking wasn't completed correctly. They didn't have the outline markings for, for handicap people to know where the front entrance to the building are. Next slide. They didn't install any trees, there was no trees at all. You know, they did the shrubs. Next slide. More missing trees. The, that's all right, next slide. The, yeah, well, the enclosure needs to be stuck out and painted to match the building and there's no top on it. So they didn't put the trellis or anything. So in this case, it was denied, they went back, within thirty days, they actually had it all completed correctly. So it's, it's really good for us to be out there. What was happening before this, next slide. Was code enforcement also does annual planning inspections on probably about twenty-five hundred properties. And this came about when we had the big recession and they didn't have enough planning staff to handle these anymore. So code enforcement's been going out and inspecting these properties every year. We've come up with a plan that if they're consecutively in compliance for three years, we'll put them out for another three years so that we can spend more time on properties that are not always in compliance. Billboards, we re-inspect every five years and the officers are out checking to make sure that the properties being, is in compliance with their landscaping, with parking. I can't tell you how many times we go out and handicap, handicap parking is now gone. They've decided to put in dining out front and they haven't come in for any approvals before doing this. Illegal signage is another thing that we're looking at when we're out there and are addressing banners, window signs, non-permitted signs and, you know, check the landscaping. Next slide. So this is an example of a property that we found where they didn't have any of the shrubs and stuff in. So they had to replace all the shrubs, about half the trees on this one. You know, and in the end, it looks much better when, once they finally completed it. Next slide. This is an example of property being out of compliance with signs and it looks much visually nicer once, you know, the property's compliant. This is another commercial property that went into foreclosure at some point. And even if they're in foreclosure or they're, they're empty and vacant, we still.